So, good afternoon. This meeting of the Napa Valley College Board of Trustees is now called to order at 4:31 PM. We welcome members of the public. Instructions on making public comment are posted in Item 1 on the agenda, and we will ask each item if there is public comment. Catherine, can you please do a roll call?
Yes, ma'am. Student trustee Soto Gonzalez.
Here.
Trustee Rios.
Here.
Trustee Baldini.
Here.
Trustee Goff.
Here.
Trustee Dodd.
Here.
Trustee Iverson? Not yet.
Sorry.
Got you. And trustee Deluna?
Is running late.
Is running late. And trustee Baker?
I am here.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right. So, Pledge of Allegiance. Catherine's going to open up the flag for us. And, let's see. Trustee Goff, would you like to lead us, please?
I knew you were going to call on me today.
Enjoy your readings.
Well, I was getting the agenda up on my iPad. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you.
Trustee Deluna has joined.
Okay, so we are all here now then. Fantastic.
Yes.
That wasn't even that bad. All right. So, adoption of the agenda. Do we have any changes, additions to the agenda? If not, we can adopt by consensus?
We do not.
All right. So, agenda is adopted by consensus. And then, let's see. Number three, we have public comment on closed-session items. At this time, the board will devote a total of up to 15 minutes to hear comments regarding closed-session agenda items. Individual comments will be limited to three minutes. Is there any public comment?
I have not received any public comment.
All right. The items that we will be reviewing in closed session are conference with legal counsel for potential litigation, conference with real property negotiators, and public employee discipline dismissal release, public employment, and conference with labor negotiators, and public employee evaluation. And I believe we have one item that one of our trustees is going to need to recuse themselves.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, just for the record, recusing myself from Item 4.3 as previously disclosed in light of my law firm's relationship with the Martin Group.
Will do. And we will bump you out into the waiting room when we go to discuss that. So, and since we do have a very full closed-session agenda, we will be going an extra half hour today, but we intend to be back at 6:00 sharp. So, with that, we are going to adjourn to closed session, and we will be back at 6:00 o'clock. So, we are... Let's see. And we did not get to everything, so we are going to have to go back in. At this time, we are resuming our public session. At...
We do have a couple of report outs, though.
We do have a couple of report outs, yes. Yeah. And so, I think the only thing we have to report out is, let's see, that one was information, action.
UVC.
Yeah, just the one. Yeah, so, 4.2, Conference with Real Property Negotiators for Upper Valley Campus. The board had reviewed the proposed modifications to the lease agreement back in June and conditionally approved it with asking for some additional content on the lease to be filled in. So, we have now just taken action and approved the modified lease with the following stipulations regarding square footage. Total square footage arrived at 9,419 square feet, and the monthly lease amount after offset will be $18,838. And we also made the following change to Article 17.3 for premises restoration. Says, "The parties expressly acknowledge that at the expiration of early or early termination of this lease, landlord intends to restore the premises for educational purposes. If requested by landlord tenant, shall bear the expense of restoration to premises not to exceed $80,000." So, that has been approved and is now ready for the City of St. Helena to finalize. So, and I believe that is it. There are other items that we did not complete, so we are going to move on to... Where are we? Seven, public comment. So, public comment is opportunity to... is governed by the State of California Brown Act. By definition, this is an opportunity to hear concerns, perspectives, and differing vantage points. The board is not able, under the Brown Act, to engage in any level of conversation or discussion, but we look forward to this opportunity to gather community input. At this time, the Board of Trustees will devote up to 15 minutes to review comment to the Board of Trustees regarding any subject not appearing as an agenda item for this meeting, but over which the board has jurisdiction. The public may request that the board place an item related to the business of the district on a future board agenda. No action or discussion will occur at this time on such items. Each comment shall last no longer than three minutes. And I do know that we have at least one item that we received via email, which I am going to read as requested. So, this comes to us from Patty McCart. And she says, "I listened to the recording of the June BOT meeting, and I was very impressed by the robust discussion between the trustees and the district regarding the lease agreement of the Upper Valley Campus to the City of St. Helena. The questions from the trustees were very thoughtful regarding the lack of specifics and blank spaces in the document and the changes to the term of agreement. As we all know, the devil is in the details when it comes to legal documents. I believe it is very important for the board to have discussions surrounding college finances with the same level of interest, detail, and enthusiasm. As the trustees know, I have been trying since December to determine the source of a $1.5 million prior-year adjustment to the 2019-20 fiscal year fund balance. I was initially told that the answer would be available when the audit was completed in February. Four months later, the audit is still not complete, and therefore neither I nor, more importantly, the trustees, have any information on this quite large adjustment or why the audit has not been completed. There has been no discussion of these issues at BOT meetings. One trustee in an email to me stated that he is going to let the delay in audit reporting go due to COVID and staffing challenges. I take issue with his stance as community colleges are giving... were given an additional two months to complete the audit, normally due at the end of December due to COVID. And according to the Chancellor's Office, NBC is the only district in the state that has still not submitted a completed audit. Also, as far as I can tell from the college website, staffing may not be optimal, but it seems adequate to get the job done. There are currently three high-level administrative staff as well as seven support staff, and I would think that the approval of overtime would be justified to comply with Chancellor's Office deadlines. Another important issue that needs to be addressed and that I have made the board aware of is the lack of information that is presented to the trustees. State law and government code require that detailed quarterly financial statements be presented to the board and entered into the meeting minutes. In addition, the board must approve any budget adjustments or transfers between major expenditure categories during the fiscal year. These requirements have not been met in approximately five years. If the trustees were given this required information, I would hope that it would spark questions, debate, and a better understanding of college finances. I know that numbers can be overwhelming and boring, but it is a responsibility of the trustees to provide oversight in these matters, just as they do regarding educational matters. I am hopeful that in the coming months that the college will come into compliance with these laws and regulations and reestablish policies and procedures to remain in compliance. Thank you." That's again from Patty McCart, who lives in Napa. I just want to say that I know that we have definitely been getting our quarterly reports, and I also know that we are aware, as is the Chancellor's Office, that we are working to complete that audit, and they know that it is coming. I do not know whether Ms. Pooch, Arissa Pooch, who is here, if she has anything that she wants to add now or want to wait till we get our finance section of the reports.
We actually can't... Trustee Baker? We wouldn't be able to address it under this general thing. We could ask her to do that under the reports later, though.
Okay, we can do that then. So, thank you so much for your comments, Ms. McCart. Do we have any other public comment?
We do not.
Do not? Okay. So, in that case, I am going to close public comment. And we are now at reports. Just a reminder that this is our first time that we're making some changes. As I announced at the June meeting, Board of Trustees welcomes reports from campus groups. Reports may be made verbally or submitted in writing. If a report is expected to last over five minutes, it's to please let the President's Office or myself to, in order so we can put you on the agenda as a separate item. And any documents presented must be sent ahead of the meeting so that they can be shared and will become a part of the public record, according to the Brown Act. So, with that, our first report, 8.2. Dr. Eileen Tahada, are you with us this evening?
I am. Good evening. Well, I think I want to begin by acknowledging the sacred land that we work, live, learn, and build community. Land has been a place where people have lived for over tens of thousands of years. And I also want to acknowledge the children, the Indigenous children's graves that continue to be found in the residential schools, both in Canada and, I believe, now here in the United States. There's some work that's going to be done. So, I want to just acknowledge that by doing land acknowledgements, we are not correcting the wrongs or the ills that have occurred. And it is my hope that as we work together, that we will come to not just acknowledge, but also work together to ensure the respect and the acknowledging of the stewardship of the land and the water and the natural resources to the Indigenous people of our area. With that, the Academic Senate will be sending the first half of the assessment report of the Academic Senate Instructional Design Institute. We are just doing the last of the edits, and we will be sending that and our conclusion based on the data to college administrators and to the Board of Trustees. In my capacity as Academic Senate President, I am looking for the opportunity that is being afforded to appoint faculty to the summer ICER review team. And I'd like to report that the Senate, the Napa Valley College Academic Senate Curriculum Committee and myself are currently enjoying the State Academic Curriculum Institute. We will be bringing back many, many ideas to enhance and enrich our work to ensure student success. This completes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Tahada. 8.3, Robert Harris, I understand, is not with us this evening and does not have a report submitted. 8.4, Associated Students of Napa Valley College Report. I do believe I saw President Marcus Jackson.
Yes, I am here. Good evening, trustees, Dr. Kraft, college administrators, faculty, and the college community. ASNVC is currently working incredibly hard during the summer season to be fully operational come August. We are currently communicating with IT and other offices and having a universal ID card system for students to allow for smoother operations at the basic needs center, library, admissions, admissions and records, and more. Our goal is to have this universal ID card system operational before the fall semester begins, and from our current projection, we believe that we are able to meet this deadline. In addition, ASNVC has been hard at work revising our bylaws and is currently on track to have them passed at our first session. ASNVC recruitment has been going well as we approach our July 15 deadline to submit applications. The review committee has been established and participants have been contacted. We expect to have a full committee ranging from students to administrators present. Yesterday, ASNVC and other student leaders met with Vice President Oscar Tahar, Chief Amber Wade, and Director Nancy Tamrisk to review COVID-19 policies for student safety. We are incredibly excited seeing this work taking place, not only to keep students safe, but to have students back on campus as well. This concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And Classified Association Report. Valerie Maul is not with us, but she did provide a report that is available via Board Docs for us to review. And then we have Classified Senate Report. Martin Shoemaker, President, are you with us? I'm not hearing him, and I don't remember if I saw his name in there.
I don't see him present.
I don't think he is here. All right. Well, if he pops in, we'll come back. So, 8.7 would be Faculty Association Report from Kristi Iwamodo, President. I know I saw her.
I am here. Hello, Board. Hello, everyone, and good evening. I have a pretty short report tonight because we don't have a whole lot going on. I did attend the National Education Association's Representative Assembly, which is always fun and impressive because you have close to... I think this year we had close to 9,000 teachers all in, and I'm going to put this in air quotes, "one place", because for the second year in a row, of course, it had to be virtual. Normally, we would all gather and converge upon one city, but last year and this year, we held everything online. But we did get a lot of our business done this year. We got a visit from not only President Biden and his wife, First Lady Jill Biden, who is an NEA member, so that was really fun. They actually came down to the headquarters and spoke to all the teachers. And Stacey Abrams joined us as well via satellite, so that was very cool. Next week, I will be attending the CTA President's Conference, California Teachers Association President's Conference, for a whole week of instruction and of current events and issues. You all have a vote in front of you tonight that I just really hope, and I want to just encourage you that, you know, the faculty, again, passed this contract. I believe 96% of the faculty who voted voted for this contract, so I just wanted to let you know. I totally vouch for it personally. As you know, it's based on the... The salary is based on the property tax, and we don't know what that is yet, so that'll be kind of fun for everyone. And I'm open to any questions you may have, but other than that, that is my report for tonight.
Thank you very much. And just FYI regarding the contract, that is an item that we were unfortunately not able to get to during our closed session because we ran out of time. We are going to do it tonight, but we'll just be having to do it at the end. So, since I believe we do need to review it in closed session before we vote on it, it will be at the end of the meeting. So, I wanted to make that change with a couple of things. We ran out of time. All right. So, moving on then, that is the end of our constituent reports. So, now we are in Administrative Services, and I keep trying to click on that, and it's not my screen. So, let's see. Now, we are moving on to Administrative Services Information. 9.1, update on the financial audit. So, and I believe our controller, Arissa Pooch, is with us this evening. No, I'm not.
There you are.
Here she is. Okay. And so, do we have an update on the audit right now?
Yes. Good evening, Board of Trustees. Good evening, school community and administrators. My very quick update regarding our current fiscal year 2019-20 audit is that it is currently ongoing. Our auditors are in the latter stage of the audit field work. For my last meeting with our auditors on June 28, the auditors are aiming to complete the field work within this month of July and offer a draft of the audited financials for my review. With this timeline, our auditors are aiming to present to the Board of Trustees Audit Committee before the August 12 board meeting. And that concludes my report. I do not have a report regarding campus housing at this time.
All right.
And I would say we can, at the end, we can probably set a date for the Subcommittee of Finance and Audit Finance to review that, which should be somewhere around 8/8, 8/7, you know, August 7th or 8th, somewhere in there. So...
That sounds good. All right then. So, do 9... Okay, so 9.2. This is our resolution to join the California Community College Financing Authority. And I believe our legal counsel, Erin Stagg, was going to be available. Did we get ahold of her?
I think our intention, since the board has looked at this, is go ahead and open the document, go for a motion in a second, and if there are questions, we can connect.
Sounds good. All right then. So, I believe we've all had opportunity to review it already, and we did review it as well in closed session and had some questions and things that were already answered. So, do we have a motion to adopt this resolution?
Baldini, move approval.
All right. Rios, thank you. Do we have any questions or discussion about it? Any public comment? All right. Then I guess, at least for this one, Erin is off the hook. Let's see. So, trustee Baldini, how do you vote?
Aye.
Trustee Deluna, how do you vote?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd, your vote?
Is this a matter that I need to recuse myself from? Sorry, Chair.
I don't think this one is. This one, maybe the next one. The next one.
This is not, Jeff. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Kraft. Thank you, Chair. I vote yes.
Okay. Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
And student trustee Soto Gonzalez?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. So, we have passed that resolution.
Did you vote, trustee Baker?
I'm sorry?
Did you vote?
Oh, I didn't. You're right. I thought yes. Thank you. So, I vote yes, and we all... So, it's unanimous vote. So, then we have 9.3, which is the student... Campus student housing intent to enter into a ground lease and coordination agreement under the Joint Occupancy Provision of the California Education Code. And this one, I believe, we do need trustee Dodd to recuse himself from. Is that correct?
Yes, I am recusing myself.
Okay. Do we need to bump him out into the waiting room again?
We're going to, as we discussed, we're going to remove trustee Dodd to the waiting room just for this item, so he can be... He would physically leave the room if we were there. And so, and we'll let him right back in after the vote. Okay? I think you have to do that, Catherine.
As this is a webinar, I do not have a waiting room for him, so he will have to leave.
He'll just have to leave. I'll tell...
Makes me do it the old-fashioned way.
I can text you when we're done.
He's gone.
Oh, he's gone. All right then. All right. Okay. So, 9.3, I guess I'm lost again. Okay. So, we've already, again, we already discussed this in closed session, that this is, and we're going to be entering into a pre-development agreement with the Martin Group, which will... And... Boy, that's the background stuff. Anyway, so we are adopting a resolution formally declaring that our intent to enter into a ground lease and coordination agreement with the Joint Occupancy Provisions of the Education Code. And this is the part where, if we have any additional questions, we would bring in our attorney. But first, let's... Do we want to go ahead and get a motion?
Move approval.
Approval. I'll second.
I heard... Who was the first? Was that?
Rios.
Rios. Okay, Rios first and Iverson second. Do we have any questions or additional discussion? None? Do we have any public comment on this item?
I don't see any.
All righty then. So, we'll go ahead and call the votes.
I'm sorry, there was no public comment.
No, okay. Okay. So, let's see. Trustee Baldini, how do you vote?
Aye.
Trustee Deluna, how do you vote?
Sorry. Aye.
Okay. And trustee Dodd has recused himself. Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
And student trustee Soto Gonzalez?
Aye.
And then I will actually vote this time. I vote yes. And so, that is a unanimous six with one recusal vote to adopt this resolution. So, I will let Jeff know he can come back. And we can move on then to 10.1, which is President and Cabinet Updates.
Okay. Thank you. We have a couple updates tonight. We do not have a foundation update. I talked with Jessica, the Executive Director, today, and she's working feverishly on wonderful strategic work. So, she asked that she would come in in August. We do have a short accreditation update. I believe that Jim McGowan is out there and who is going to present this. Jim?
Hi, Dr. Kraft. Thank you.
Hi.
And hello, Board of Trustees and colleagues of the Napa Valley College community. I'm just going to give a short update on the status of the ICER and our accreditation-related work that we've been up to since the end of the semester. Catherine, are you working the PowerPoint? Or is it Holly? Whoever it is, it's not me, so...
That's me, and it is showing on the screen. Can you not see?
Okay. So, I'm going to go ahead and open up my own copy and just speak from that, and then that should work fine. So, the great news is we have about half of the ICER in its second draft form in our hands. Our, of course, is Dr. Robin Warren, all of myself as Accreditation Steering Committee co-chairs. Standards 1 and 2 make up the first half of the ICER. You can see them there. Standards covering mission, academic quality, institutional integrity, instructional programs, library and learning support services, and student support services. So, a lot of the instruction and learning support and student support, and of course, the institutional integrity piece. We do have a second draft in our hands, and we are busy reading and revising and planning and plotting as we speak. The not-so-great news is that we have been unable to get complete second drafts for Standards 3 and 4. There were some recent staffing changes and loss of administrative positions in those areas of the college that are related to those standards, and that has interrupted progress on the drafts of standards related to Sections 1 and 4. Not all of them, but we are missing some substantial ones, including, you can see in that fourth bullet point down, technology resources and financial resources. So, those are some key pieces that we're going to need to figure out a solution for going forward, obviously. And to that end, we have contacted staff, including Dr. Kraft, related to those areas, and we are trying to work with them as we speak. The final slide on my end. We've got a sort of innovative new step that I'd like to introduce briefly. We've worked, we, of course, again, being Dr. Warren and myself, have worked closely with Dr. Kraft's office to plan for an accreditation summer review team, which would be a group of individuals from the various constituent groups who will be reading the second drafts and making comments back to the Accreditation Steering Committee co-chairs as we prepare a third draft, which would go to the Accreditation Steering Committee itself in August. So, this is a way to get more eyes on the accreditation report, the ICER. And we're working on that right now, as well as a website that Robin's office is putting together where this draft and attendant evidence will be made available to first the review team, but then ultimately the campus community. That's my report.
Thank you very much. And just to kind of circle back versus what we had discussed at the last meeting regarding compensation for faculty, just wanted to let everyone know that it's my understanding... regarding compensation for faculty, just wanted to let everyone know that it's my understanding that Dr. Kraft is working with the Academic Senate to find a solution for that that everyone will be happy with. So.
Thank you. And thank you, Jim. A good report. And, and I just got to say, you know, having served in this kind of role for a long time, Jim's knocking out of the park. You are an exceptional faculty member, but this has been a terrific spot for you. So thank you so much.
I appreciate you saying so. You're quite welcome.
It's terrific. We have a couple more pieces here. Public affairs and communications update from Holly, who's got a link for us. Hi, Holly.
Hello. Hello, fellow Board of Trustees and community and faculty and friends. I'm happy to give you a brief update on just a few things that we are working on. First, I would like to share our Get Vaccinated campaign. We'll go to the next slide. We have reached out to a number of staff and faculty and students and put together this really sort of fun campaign to remind and encourage everyone, students and staff, to get vaccinated. So you can just flip through these fairly quickly if you like. You will see that both our student trustee and our ASNDC president are included, as well as a variety of others, each with their own message about why getting vaccinated is important. We also are working on some Spanish language versions and sharing these throughout the month on social media. Just an idea. Okay, website. I know this is impossible for you to see because it's really, really tiny, but the point is, we are moving forward on the new website, and we have a production timeline in place, and it's happening. So you'll see that little flag there is May 13th, when the Board of Trustees approved the contract. And then that beginning red line is when we did our kickoff. This is a series of steps that we are taking through February of 2022, when it is our intention to launch the website. I'd like to show you just a couple of things on the new website, just to give you an idea of where we are and where we're going. So next one, please. First, colors. The colors of our logo, which we have been working with, are incredibly challenging and not ADA compliant. So we've worked with our designer to create a series of colors that are complementary but jewel tones. We've darkened the gold, added some blue and purple, an array of grays and blacks. All of these are saturated enough to be able to be ADA compliant. In our own color scheme, only the red actually works. So that was the first thing we wanted to address. Next, we are working on the wireframes. If you go to the next slide, please. Again, with this is, whoops, can you go back, please? The first one? Go back one. So the first, so the first step of the design is creating a series of wireframes. And we decided, in working with our designer, that we would do this on mobile first, because it really helps us to see how it will lay out and how it will work. Our next step is to take this and put this into a website wireframe. Then we'll begin adding colors and designs. What I'm sharing with you is not the final product as far as, in, you know, navigation or anything. It is just to give you a brief idea. So you'll see, for example, if you look at, on this first one, the little arrow that you see, it tells you that it's an indication that there's more content. You'll see where it says CTA button. That means a call to action. On that next, that first one is a welcome. If we go to the next one, we go to an audience navigation, which is current students, high school students, transfer, career ed, veterans, job seekers, those kinds of things. The third one is our meta majors, exploration pathways. You can go to the next slide, please. You'll see here, we've got one career ed, then online learning, which will likely change, but it include, will include information and stats like NBC Promise and those kinds of programs. That third one is spotlights, which will be stories about students, staff, and alumni, the kinds of things that we share on the Newsroom site. Next, please. Here, we get into news and updates and stories and press releases. The next is events. We'll have a very robust calendar on the new website. Life at Napa Valley College and social. And if you could go to the next and final one, please. You can see here that this is really our menu and our quick links, all of the pieces that we are required to have to make sure that Title IX, the Board of Trustees' link to the agenda, is here. We will be fleshing this out, but what you see here was developed based on looking at Google Analytics and the top most visited pages on our website, as well as original feedback from Phase 1 of the website. We are going to be doing another survey of our students since they are the primary user of our website and integrating that content and information into this. And that is all I have to share for you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. It looks good. It's great seeing web from trustee Baker's comment, I don't know, six months, seven months ago? Like, not much has changed. It's coming along, so we're very excited. And I think Holly wanted just to share with the board tonight and everybody else, you can see the line, we're moving along. So it's exciting. Thank you so much. A couple little pieces of reorganization of administrative services area. For the past several weeks, I've had the pleasure of serving as the immediate supervisor for information technology in the business office under Arissa and the facilities department. I want to, I want to just share quickly that I've analyzed and looked at administrative services unit leadership, and I'm working on a, on a mild reorganization plan for that that we can talk about later. There are a couple things in closed session tonight that I'll share with the board. But I do want to give, at this moment, some real shout-outs to, first, to the, the information technology team, which has really pulled together, I think, in a remarkable way, has done great work over the past several weeks or month, just one thing after the next. So we have had no, no significant issues. We're moving forward, and I think they're, they're catching up. So thank you. My hats off to you all in that. Same for Arissa and team in the business office. Incredible team, slightly understaffed on both of these sides, and we're working with that. So she has stepped up, and I'm just keeping, keeping pace with Arissa. Thank you. And Matt is away tonight on family business for, for a little break, and, but he shares his, his insights, too. Facilities is working hard to get ready for fall, including updating parking lots, working on the facilities, you know, kind of making everything sharpen up. So it's all going, it's all going good. And I think with that, I am ready to finish this cabinet update, unless the cabinet themselves, I did not see Oscar or Sarah. Do you have a report tonight that you would like? No, no for Oscar and no for Sarah? Okay. All right. Thank you, guys. I just wanted to double check. So we're ready for 10.2, Madam Chair. You're muted.
Probably just as well. This one is a big one. So, and we have, let's see, Holly, let me get back where it was. So, Dr. Kraft, I think you have several people that are going to help this.
Let me just introduce it. The team, the leadership team at the, at the college has been discussing, obviously, protocols surrounding COVID-19. It's happened nationally. It's happened at the state level. It's happened at all different levels in the state, you know, K-12s, private business, whatever it might be, higher ed, and in the community college system. We've spent literally hundreds of hours on this over the past few months. We have a very strong team that meets every, cross-functional team that meets every Tuesday for a good period of time that discusses. We're going to unpack for you tonight, as trustees, for your consideration and then adoption, options that we have talked about, how we feel like we should proceed as an institution, balancing all the things that we know, you know, safety, student success, access, and all of that. So I believe, and you guys are going to have to give me a thumbs up, that we are starting with Amber and Nancy, I believe, unless that is incorrect. And you can educate me right now, somebody.
Amber and I have pulled a little bit of a switcheroo. This is Nancy. So I will handle the first two slides. Then we'll, we'll pass the baton to Annie and then to Amber.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, Nancy Tamarisk is our, go ahead and self-introduce, Nancy, if you will.
Sure. Welcome. I've met most of you, I believe. And I'm honored to, to present to the board this evening and to, to our campus community. I'm going to be doing a little bit of riffing here. What we want to do is present the background of where we've been and, and our current guidelines, so you'll understand kind of how, how we, why decision, a decision should be hopefully made this evening about how we're going to proceed. So we spent several months, as you know, as closing, shutting things down and transitioning to another form of giving services and another form of education. And honestly, I, I, I do have to say it. When I talk to my colleagues at other colleges, I am on the best team. It has been very organized, very transparent, very open to people's, the best information. And so it has been such a pleasure to serve on this team, as challenging as it has been. So as, as you all may know, if you were, if you were following the news at all, every, it seemed like every few days there were new directives, changes in directives from CDC, the state, and the local. And so there was a lot of tap dancing around as we, we attempted to comply, and I think we did comply. And I'm sure you've had reports about the many things that were done as far as maintaining the healthy environment. There is, were changes to cleaning protocols. One of the things that we're working on now is, well, that's Matt's venue, of course, is more attention to increasing the ventilation, changing the filtration systems around, installing portable HEPA systems in the labs. Some of the more minor changes have been putting in plexiglass screens between people where needed. And so that's been a big effort, and that effort is ongoing. That's going to continue. Maintaining healthy operations, as you know, there were, the bulk of the employees, except for those who had to be on campus, transitioned to working at home. There were also things such as staggering schedules so that there were fewer people in the office and transitioning to not just teaching online, but to offering every, every student service online. Let's see. Number three, promoting vaccinations. Isn't that great, what Holly's team has come up with? I think that's really nice. We also offer free COVID-19 PCR and antigen testing on campus. And one of the joys of offering that service is we've been, the athletic teams have actually been able to compete in at least a few games this spring. The baseball team got out there, the women's soccer team got out there. So what a pleasure it's been to work with the athletic department and, and have our, our students be able to actually compete. We've, let's see, we did, oh, this isn't listed, but contact tracing. Thank heaven. I haven't had to do any contact tracing since February, but that was a really important way, method we had of keeping things safe. Promoting consistent, correct use of facial coverings, hand washing, facilities got out there, a lot of hand, hand washing and hand sanitation, station signage all over the place, and also education of students and staff as to how to behave safely. Next slide, please. Okay, so what's, on June 15th, as we know, there was the big, big unveiling from Governor Newsom of the current status of where we're at. And, and I think this slide is important because it will show you sort of the, the cusp of the decision we're on now. So what was new? Vaccinated people are now required to wear facial coverings only in very limited settings. These include public transit, healthcare settings, and indoor at K-12, childcare, and youth activity centers. Non-vaccinated people are required to wear facial coverings in all indoor public spaces. Businesses have the option of allowing customers to self-attest to vaccination status or to require proof of vaccination. And I don't know what you all are seeing out in the community, but what I'm seeing is nobody's stopping me at the door of Lucky's or Safeway or CVS and asking to show a card. People, it's an honor system out there. Some people are masking, some people are not. Some employees are masking, some people are not. And I don't know, it, it's, it's, people seem cool. People, people seem cool with it all. And finally, social distancing is no longer required, and there are no longer any capacity limits on, on indoor spaces, indoor gathering. And so I'm going to quit right there.
Thank you, Nancy. Good overview. And Nancy's at the core of it, really, you know, kind of finger on the pulse, so to speak, in her, in her trade as of all of this. So NBC protocol for NBC staff and faculty, who's up?
Good evening. I'm Annie Chindavong from the Office of Human Resources, and I'll be discussing the recommended protocol for NBC employees. So the district will continue to follow the guidelines established by Cal OSHA, and that includes that we are recommending that all employees be fully vaccinated. In the guidelines, in order for an employee to work indoors without face covering, the district must document the employee's vaccination status. So therefore, we're recommending that managers would meet with their staff and employees would self-attest if they are either fully vaccinated, unvaccinated, or they also have the right to decline to state if they're vaccinated or not. And this would be documented and kept confidential. Employees who are vaccinated, or, I'm sorry, employees who are unvaccinated or declined to state would have to wear face coverings when indoors. And in addition, the district would provide N95 respirators to unvaccinate employees for voluntary use. We understand that there may be some employees who have a medical condition and are unable to wear face covering. So when an accommodation is required, an unvaccinated employee would not need to wear face covering. So, you know, this situation is evolving, and the district remains the right to make changes for the health and safety of our employees.
Thank you, Annie. This may be a point, too, can we stay on this one just, just for a moment? In, in terms of how it works practically, I would meet with my staff, read a predetermined paragraph that Annie and team are going to provide for us. So all managers are asking the same thing to the same people, so it's very consistent. And you don't have to answer in affirmative or negative. You can decline. And then you go through these other options. We feel like that's doable and manageable for us, and, and I think we have a good accord with the classified union, and faculty have weighed in to some extent. And I don't have that piece from, from Christie and team, but I, I'm believing there's no, no issues at this moment, at least. Can I, anything else, Annie, on this one, or from the team, on just of this slide?
I have a quick question just about the self-attest. Is that, are, we're going to require proof? Or is it just on the honor system?
No, we would not, we would not require proof. It would just be the honor system.
Good. Thank you. Let's move to the next one then. I think this is Amber, right?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I'm Amber Way, Chief of Police here at the college. We're really not recommending a whole lot of changes for our visitor protocols. All visitors, visitors entering buildings will be wearing facial coverings, whether or not they're vaccinated. When meeting with staff, we really wanted to be able to offer in-person assistance and balance the, the idea of everyone feeling as comfortable as possible. And in order to do this, we feel it's best for people to continue to wear their, their face coverings when entering the buildings. Now, obviously, the same would be at, at the board meetings. Our, our board would be self-attesting since you are staff, and then the public that would be coming in would be wearing facial, facial coverings as well. We would continue to have outside users sign waivers when using our facilities. We've worked pretty hard trying to comply with, with our outside users and accommodate them to the best of our abilities. And so we would just continue to have them sign the waivers to ensure they're following our guidance and, and everyone is staying safe. Obviously, with, with what Nancy covered, you know, the, the public out there might be experiencing something different, different situations, going to the grocery store, that sort of thing. So sign. So signage is going to be huge, making sure we have signage up on all of the buildings, along with having masks available for people that might forget theirs at the entrances, in all of our open spaces, and then obviously also in the classrooms.
And we might share an example, I think in terms of Festival Napa Valley, as you know, is, why don't you talk about that real quick, Amber, if you're up to speed on that?
Yeah, yeah, so Festival Napa Valley, they're using quite a lot of our facilities, it's a large event, and they have submitted a compliance that all of their people involved and everyone coming to their festival have been vaccinated. So in their areas, they will not be required to wear facial coverings. And this is helpful for them and what they're doing within their festival.
And the reason I asked Amber to share that is because I think people, you know, it's normalized, and it's not an unreasonable request to ask of people. And I think users are really understanding, you know, us trying to balance this safety issue, so, thank you, Amber. Students, it's going to be Dr. Sarah Parker and
Hi.
Oscar DeHaro kind of sharing this piece.
Good evening. Okay, so as you've heard, our emergency operations team has been closely following these multiple sources of guidance, and I'm just going to reiterate, the CDC, the NCHS, the CDHP and Cal OSHA. Cal OSHA regulations do not apply to students, so the process that I'm, that you heard described for staff does not translate exactly in terms of expectations for our students. There is not specific higher education guidance now as there had been previously. So it's up to us to take all of this into consideration and decide how to proceed here. We've also, as you heard, been continuing to make improvements to our campus filtration systems, staying attuned to the local data with regard to the spread of COVID, engaging in conversations with campus constituencies and observing what some of our fellow colleges are doing. And taking all of this information into account in our conversations, we extensively considered the pros and cons of requiring vaccinations for all students for fall semester 2021. The central benefit of taking the approach of requiring full vaccination status for all students in fall semester is, of course, that we would be confident in the high collective level of protection from COVID-19 in our in-person classes. However, the timing of implementing such a requirement is challenging for numerous reasons. The amount of time between now and the start of fall semester. For those who have not been vaccinated, communication to students about this expectation. Establishing and supporting with staff a verification system. Additionally, there are challenges posed by the timing of FDA approval, differences among vaccines themselves, and the fact that we have students enrolled in NBC courses at many local high schools, just to name a few. It's hard to anticipate whether a vaccination requirement would bolster or suppress enrollment based on the variety of opinions and perspectives that we have encountered. We also considered not requiring vaccinations for any of our students and either requiring or not masks indoors as an alternative. We considered a variety of sub options associated with this approach, for example, using this self-attestation model for individuals upon entering buildings that many of us are familiar with because we are, you know, entering business establishments that use this model. We also considered not using this self-assessment model. While the elimination of masks on campus would perhaps be welcomed by some, based on our numerous conversations with staff and students, there is support for maintaining mask usage for indoor in-person classes where students are stationary and in the same space with each other for extended periods of time. There remain questions about the impact of variants and with children under 12 not yet having access to vaccinations. Maintaining a mask requirement also makes us feel more confident in being able to raise class caps, which is allowable, which will allow for enhanced access to our in-person classes. Together with the academic deans and the health and safety team at NBC, we conducted a thorough review of all courses scheduled in person for fall semester. We recognize that in order to achieve some of the pedagogical goals for some of our in-person courses, such as Corral, such as our athletics teams, such as our wind instrument courses, mask usage is not always possible or certainly not preferable. And a vaccination requirement would allow us to teach these hard-to-convert classes in person as we, as we believe they are intended to be taught. Therefore, our recommendation is to require vaccinations in selected sections in which students are expected to have either close contact with one another, central to the curriculum itself, increased respiration, or both. And the deans in these areas where these classes, selected classes, have communicated with the instructors and in some cases, students, about the possibility of this vaccination requirement and have full support. Should we conclusively go in this direction, the Office of Academic Affairs, Admissions and Records, and our Student Health Center are prepared with an immediate and ongoing system of communication, a verification process, including the opportunity for students to request an exemption, as well as a grace period that we've timed in which we would require masks in the interim to allow students the opportunity to become fully vaccinated and participate in the classes. If not able to run these specific courses with a vaccination requirement, in most cases, these courses would revert to online, which is, in our view, not how these courses should be offered. Vice President DeHaro has had the opportunity to speak with representatives from ASNBC, you heard this referenced earlier tonight, and he's going to speak briefly on their perspective to our recommendation.
Well, thank you very much, Dr. Parker. Yes, I first want to thank Davis Otello, the trustee, Assistant Trustee, Marcus Texon, our ASNC president, Sarah Ricken, Student Club Advisor, Student Club Leader, and Janine Mizona, ASNC Senator, along with Big Casada, Student Life Manager. We were able to meet yesterday for a full hour of great dialogue and great engagement. We went over the thoughts that the institution has in terms of what we're looking at for protocols. And at the end of the conversation, with great questions, with, again, great sharing, the students agreed with the recommendation that they're presenting here to you this evening. What they did ask, though, is that they asked that, that a communication be sent out via Canvas, via student email, via social media, to all students, to make them aware of these protocols, so that students are prepared for them and understand them before they step on campus for the fall semester. But again, it was a great conversation that we had. I want to also thank Chief Wade, Nancy Tammeris, for being part of the conversation. And perhaps, since we have both our student trustee, as well as our president of ASNC, they may have a couple of comments to make as well, if they'd like.
You see, Marcus is saying, no, I don't think, correct? Okay.
Uh, can I? Uh, yeah, I do agree, yeah, we did talk about it. Well, mostly them, they did talk about it, I just mostly listened, I got some input and everything. And it did sound like everyone agreed with this recommended option that's up front of you, that was great. Mostly because we tried to go over with every single, like every student's perspective or like all the scenarios that could happen with each option. And like, based on what we discussed yesterday, like this one we recommended was the best one of all of them, to allow every single student to have a chance to, you know, try to go back to their normal life per se, like life before COVID, to be at class while still providing like a safe protocol, a safe life per se from COVID. So, yeah, I do believe this is a good one. And, yeah.
Hey, thank you. And I think Dr. Parker, that's my report.
Thank you so much. And the last sentence I have here for you is that I want to note that there may be liability involved with any option. But that said, you know, we feel that we have taken a very reasoned approach and have a clear rationale for arriving at this recommendation to you for your consideration. And I'm sure you have questions, which we are happy to do our best to answer.
I would say, before you launch on some questions, or even just adopting this, a couple of things. Overarchingly, you know, we were looking at, as a team, student access. It's critical that we don't close this pipeline down and that students can continue the progress towards their degrees or their certificates, and that, to me, is paramount. And we wanted to balance also faculty and staff's safety with that. And we were very interested, thank you, Oscar and team, to make sure that the students were in support, which they seem, they seem ready to do. So this is flexible, but kind of firmly specific and supported. So I'm feeling, we're coming to you tonight with this recommendation to adopt that would be for the students, which we feel is well thought out. And thank you, Sarah, for, you know, doing the yeoman's work in putting this all together.
Do we have any, any questions from our group? I see Trustee Goff has her hand up.
Yes, I just wanted to ask, I, number one, I think it's a great compromise, I think it's a great recommendation. I'm very happy that those classes that really need to be in person to actually be a class have been considered and that you're starting there. However, I do have a question about whether these same students who are going to agree to be vaccinated also agree to wear a mask when they're not in those classes, just for consistency's sake, because we are still talking about young people who, who think, well, I'm not wearing a mask, they're not wearing a mask, you know, that kind of mentality. So is this, is there a blanket mask requirement for all students? And when they enter this, these classes that fall under this criteria, they can take off their mask? Is that, is that how it's being presented?
Sarah, please.
That's exactly right. So this would be, we would frame this as, due to the nature of the activity in this particular class, we want you to be able to participate without your mask. I think as Dean Vanderweil said to me, we want Romeo and Juliet to be able to kiss. But the overarching expectation for students indoors in our in-person classes will be that they wear their mask, and that will be consistent for all students in all of those classes. So I hope that in that framing with these classes being called out as the, as the specific exception for a particular reason, that that will be clear to students.
And does this mean, just kind of a follow-up on that question from me, it says you're fully, if requiring fully vaccination for these particular classes, does that mean that if a student is not vaccinated, they cannot take this class, even if they were to wear a mask?
That is correct.
And, but the teachers, the professors, if they have self-attested, they can be unmasked while teaching any of these classes? Correct.
That's correct.
Any other questions, follow-up from anyone?
We'd be looking for a motion to adopt this recommended option with a second, and then the board to address any other further questions.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
I'm going to give that one to Trustee Goff, and the second from Baldini. Do we have any public comment on this item? This would be a lot more, a lot, this is going much faster than anticipated, but yay!
I have not received any, and I do not get any handouts.
All right, then I will call the vote. Trustee Baldini, how do you vote?
Aye.
Trustee Deluna, how do you vote?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd, your vote?
Aye.
Trustee Goff, your vote?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson, your vote?
Aye.
Trustee Rios, your vote?
Aye.
Trust, Student Trustee Soto Gonzalez, your vote?
Aye.
And then I will also vote in the affirmative, aye. So we have a unanimous vote for vaccine and mask-wearing for the fall semester.
You trustees, this is thoughtful, compassionate, and very responsible action you've taken. I really appreciate it. Thank you, team. You did a great job in preparing this, and as we said, there was hundreds of hours here. So Amber, Nancy, Oscar, Sarah, I'm missing some, Annie, thank you, thank you, thank you.
You're here.
And Holly didn't present tonight, but she certainly was part of this team as well.
Dr. Kraft?
Yes.
I just want to make sure that it's clear that we actually received quite a bit of material before the meeting to review from staff, and that was very much appreciated. I mean, we, sometimes we sit here and we look like we're not doing anything, but we received a lot of material and we reviewed it. And so I just want to make that, make that clear, and thank you for all that material.
Thank you. As we said, it links with hundreds of pages you're reading. So, yeah, thank you for reading. Thanks again.
Make us go blind. All right. So now we are on to consent calendar, and
Sure. I would like to, just to make it easy, I'm just going to recuse myself from the consent calendar primarily on item 11.8, Mentis Memorandum.
So noted, thank you, Trustee Iverson. So I, does anyone have any other items that they wanted to pull, or do I have a motion to adopt the, and approve the consent calendar?
We have approval of the consent calendar, Trustee Baldini.
A second.
Actually, I'm sorry, I wanted to bring up the minutes from the 10th. I would like to pull those because I don't feel that they're correct.
Okay, so we will be, do we have an amended motion then to, to approve the consent calendar, calendar without 11.2?
So move with the amended pulling 11.2 and
All right. And do we have a second?
Yes, Goff seconds.
So Goff second, okay. So then we have Trustee Baldini, how do you vote?
Aye.
Trustee Deluna?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
And Iverson has recused himself, and Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Student Trustee Soto Gonzalez?
Aye.
And then I also will vote in the affirmative, aye. So we have approved the consent calendar, and now we have the minutes that we can take a look at separately.
Do we want to look at them today, or?
Um, we can wait, we can, we can, we can wait and approve them at the next meeting, that would be fine with me. And then we can address the corrections that you want to make between now and August. That would be fine.
I'd say, Miss Trustee Deluna, that we do exactly that. You and I can meet or talk with Catherine, and then we can kind of work those out and bring them back, and then the board can look at those. I think, are you okay with that, Catherine, in terms of procedural piece? We're fine?
That works for me.
Okay. With everybody?
Well, how would we know, the rest of us, whether we agree that there's something wrong or not? I don't know.
I think we, I think we would, we would see an amended version in the next packet, is that correct?
They'll be side by side. You'll see what we have tonight, you'll see the suggestion corrections from Trustee Deluna, and then, and then the board can address that. So we don't have to kind of go through that process real time right now, but you can address that. Can it work?
Yeah.
All right then, so we are on to items 12.1. This is, we are looking at a grant opportunity to develop the Mount Veder space, and the Real Property Committee reviewed this a while ago. So Trustee Baldini, would you like to give us a quick rundown of what the Real Property Committee said? And you're muted, sir.
Thank you, it was a great presentation by Dr. Sarah Parker regarding the Mount Veder Preserve. And to, well, to paraphrase someone from 52 years ago, it's, it's one small step of a giant leap to uncover the potential and leverage the, you know, the educational aspects of this property. So it's, it's almost been that long since we've done anything up there. But this, this agreement will allow us to take a look at grant opportunities following a survey of the property of what's there, what's underground, what's above ground, what's been added, and potentially what's been added, and potentially, uh, open this up to, uh, um, various educational programs such as plant science, horticulture, forestry, and, and so on and so forth that are consistent with, with the, uh, Mount Veder Preserve. So the, the Real Property Committee, wholeheartedly and unanimously, moved this item to the full board for their consideration.
Do we have any, well, let me ask quickly, do we have any public comment on this item?
I have not received any public comment.
And, uh, any questions, uh, about it for either members of the Real Property Committee or for Dr. Parker?
I will...
Have a motion.
Take the committee's recommendation and move for approval.
All right, do we have a second for that?
Second, Inez.
All right, we have a first from Trustee Iverson and a second from Trustee Deluna. Trustee Baldini, how do you vote?
Aye.
Trustee Deluna?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Student Trustee Soto Gonzalez?
Aye.
And I too will vote in the affirmative. So we have a unanimous vote to approve the agreement with Lake Jopling Landscape Architecture to tell us all the wonderful things we can do with Mount Veder. All right. So now we have 12.2, uh, West Oakland Job Resource Center Partnership Agreement. Dr. Parker is going to tell us about that.
Yes. So the West Oakland Job Resource Center, uh, exists to connect skilled workers with jobs in construction and transportation distribution logistics. They previously partnered with the Northern California Teamsters Apprentice Training and Education Trust Fund and the College of Alameda, which is part of the Peralta Community College District, the Oakland Army Base and Port Employers to develop what they called the TDL, Pre-Aprentice Ship Training and Teamsters TDL Apprenticeship Program. The success of that program led to their pursuit of a California Workforce Development Board Planning and Implementation Accelerator 9.0 grant to basically expand that successful venture more broadly than the East Bay. Um, the West Oakland Job Resource Center received that grant and will be serving as the lead agency in the development of a regional transportation, distribution, and logistics workforce equity system, along with three regional partners. Napa Valley College was identified in that grant as the North Bay County Lead Agency. And if this agreement is approved, would be sub-awarded $100,000 to do the following. One, to participate in the planning of this regional system to support jobs in transportation, uh, transportation and distribution logistics. And two, to help implement the training of 25% of the target participants in the pre-apprentice ship program with target completion and placement deliverables as part of that, that training plan. Um, in my view, this partnership will help us to gain experience as a college with pre-apprentice ship programs, which is a very promising direction that the state is supporting right now and has the potential to result in continued participation in this regional system and to provide ongoing training for this high-growth industry, which is also very high-growth in this area. Uh, this project will be led by our incoming Senior Dean of Career Education and Workforce Development, Dr. Marriott, and is also supported by Sherry Tennyson, who first brought the opportunity to us, Napa Valley College's career consultant. And she's also here in case you had any specific questions.
I don't have any questions, but I think this is really exciting and a very unique and it's, it's a great opportunity. And I'm happy to entertain a motion for approval.
I'll second it. Are you making a motion?
Sorry, that did sound a little odd. Yes, move for approval.
All right, so a second from Trustee Goff. Uh, any public comment on this item? Any further discussion or questions for Dr. Parker or Ms. Tennyson?
No public comments, sorry.
All right. All right, thank you. This does sound pretty awesome. So I wanna go ahead and take the vote. Um, Trustee Baldini, your vote?
Aye.
Trustee Deluna?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
And Student Trustee Soto Gonzalez?
Aye.
I too will vote in the affirmative. So we have a unanimous vote to, uh, move forward with this agreement. So thank you. Next, we have up 13 point, oh, wait, this is the part that we need to move, isn't it?
No, this was not, this was not a closed-session item, so you can move forward on this.
This was not a closed-session item, okay.
It's not.
So, okay, okay, very good, blah, 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 where am I then? Okay, so this is, hold on, just give me a second. I'm sorry, I'm lost again. Uh, do we have any public comment on this item?
I have not received any and I do not see any hands raised. So this 13.1 is the opportunity for public comment. And then 13.2 is identical, however, that is your action item.
Right. And that one, you do need to, um, wait till we go into closed session to discuss again, correct?
No, you do not. This is ready for approval. Yeah, this was not a, the Faculty Association Agreement was not on the closed, uh, session.
Oh, I thought it was. I apologize. I am sorry. Then Christie, you can go home early if you want. All right then. So let's get to it. We're going to, uh, pro, 3.2. Let's get to approving this contract or agreement with Napa Valley College Faculty Association. Do we have any public comment on this item before we move forward?
And no, we do not.
All right then. So can I get a motion to approve?
Move, Trustee Baldini.
Second. Thank you. Deluna? Deluna, so we have a first and a second for approval of the 2021 to 2024 Napa Valley Community College District and Napa Valley College Faculty Association, CCA, CTA, NEA agreement. Uh, Trustee Baldini, how do you vote?
Aye.
Trustee Deluna, how do you vote?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd, your vote?
Aye.
Trustee Goff, your vote?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson, your vote?
Aye.
Trustee Rios, your vote?
Aye.
Student Trustee Soto Gonzalez, your vote?
Aye.
And I will also vote in the affirmative. So we have full support for our agreement with faculty. Thank you, Chris, Christie, very much. All right. Then, now moving on to 14.1. This is an increase in the student activities fee to $12. So do we have any, first of all, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not.
All right. Um, Mr. Daharo, do you have anything to tell us about this before we go ahead and ask for a motion?
No, but I, I, I would, uh, I would ask, uh, President, uh, Jackson, see if he has any comments he likes to add, he'd like to add prior to approval.
Please.
Yes, there are a few, um, key things, as you can see, on the proposal. Most notably, um, students have to pay $5 for a student ID before May 2021. But with the approval of this, um, student IDs are free and will be provided to them hopefully again this fall. Additionally, um, this $12 student activities fee will go not only to, um, provide more funds for ASNBC events, but also, um, different college functions, including support for the library. Um, just going over a few notes here. Uh, the fee increase was actually approved by students in April, um, where there was 75% in the affirmative. Additionally, I believe similar on this proposal here. Um, the last time the, um, the student activities fee was actually increased was in 2011. So you're a bit overdue, um, with an increase. Uh, there is a list of colleges, uh, showing you, um, the respective student activities fees. Um, so that is all. Thank you.
Yeah, and when we were looking at this earlier, I, but several people had questions about it. It's, it's, it's not a lot of money, but it's a pretty significant jump from five to 12. However, we are way below the mark with most of these other schools. So I think that this will be a, a good investment. Now, any questions? Not, we can, I can take a motion?
Some move?
All right, we have a motion from Trustee Deluna and a second from Trustee Rios. All right. So Trustee Baldini, how do you vote?
Aye.
Trustee Deluna?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Student Trustee Soto Gonzalez?
Aye.
I will also vote in the affirmative. So we have, uh, unanimous approval to increase our student activities fee to $12 per semester, $6 for summer. All right. And now we're on to 5.1, second reading of board policies. I don't think, uh, this is a pretty much simple procedure. Do we have any public comment on these?
Uh, we do not.
Any questions, uh, or discussion from the board?
I'd move approval.
All right. Second from Baldini, so first from Rios and second from Baldini. So Trustee Baldini, what, how do you vote?
Aye.
Trustee Deluna?
Aye.
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Student Trustee Soto Gonzalez?
Aye.
And I also will vote in the affirmative. So we have a unanimous vote on our second reading for board policies being adopted. So moving on to board reports, 16.1. This is our Standing Committee and Other Appointed Reports. Uh, DAS, District Auxiliary Services, have you met? I think it's Iverson, is it? Am I correct?
Um, DAS, we did meet and there is a lot of, um, good stuff, uh, coming our way. Uh, we did talk about the food truck, scholarly eats, and also our, um, coffee shop and looking at some alternatives for that. So looking forward to bringing you guys back some more information regarding those areas.
If you guys are looking for another food truck, there's a grilled cheese one for sale. I saw up north part town and I would so eat a grilled cheese from a food truck.
More honestly for looking for, you know, expanding it and sending it out into the community and, you know...
Do it, let's do it. And grilled cheese.
...coming our way.
All right, so Viticulture and Winery Foundation, that would be Trustee Baldini, correct?
No report.
No report, all right. Legislative Affairs Committee, Trustee Goff?
Yes, um, thanks to Holly Dawson, who once again makes me look like I'm on it. Uh, we did not meet, however, uh, she sent me this update. She said that the Legislature released a summary of a revised 2021 state budget, which reflects a partial deal with Governor Gaffin Newsom, which I'm sure all of you know about. The education trailer bill includes support for the community college system, including strong workforce program, basic needs, mental health, Omoja, Mesa, Puente, uh, EOP's student equity and achievement and emergency financial aid, and our favorite, B927, that's a baccalaureate, uh, degree program bill. It has been re-refered, I love that word, to committee and appears to have no opposition. So we are hoping it will just sail right through. So once again, thank you to Holly Dawson for keeping her finger on the pulse of our state legislature, and that is my report.
Fantastic. All right, Audit and Finance Committee? I don't, did not have a meeting, Real Property, not had a meeting. Uh, Napa Valley College Foundation, uh, Kyle, Trustee Iverson, do you have anything for us from the foundation?
We are meeting this month, so, next month.
Later.
I'll have a report.
And Accreditation Steering Committee, Trustee Deluna, anything for us?
We are trying to have a meeting next week.
Great. All right. So I think that is it for our Standing, uh, Committee and Other Reports. Future agenda items, pulling up our log and see if anybody has anything that we want to add. I think we could take Mount Veder off, can't we?
We can.
Yes, we can.
Yeah. And then we're looking, uh, do we have anything to report on some of these outstanding things? The honorary degrees, diversity training tour of facilities, or are we just still waiting?
I think the diversity training piece, we're going to address over the summer with, with, when the, how the board wants to, uh, approach that. So we'll have an opportunity in, in our retreat to address that.
When is our retreat?
I don't know. I knew as soon as I said that.
Okay. Is it August 28th? August 28th? You're right, that's probably already on my calendar, but I'm gonna double check.
That's what I have on my calendar.
Okay.
From nine to one.
All right then, and...
28th from nine to one, yeah.
That's, that's what I have, I don't know, good change.
And, uh, do we have anything that anybody wants to add? I have something, but I'll let everybody else go forward first.
I do.
Yes.
I, I really wanna stay on top of the audit, uh, make sure that we address concerns. And I also, it sprung into my head that if we're working on the 1920 audit, what's happening with the 20, I guess it hasn't come full circle yet for the 2021 yet, right? Um, but I, regular updates about that, just because I think it's important for not only us, but for the public, to be assured that it's moving forward and, and we're gonna be in compliance. So if we could have an update.
I, I think it's already scheduled, so on the 12th...
Good.
We will have a full audit, um, agenda item.
Okay. We'll be looking, and then the Finance Committee is going to be meeting sometime this week.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Okay, thank you.
Anything else, anybody else? I had kind of a weird one, I don't know how to frame it. Um, I was, uh, approached by a friend of mine who's doing programming for the AAU. Um, I'm trying to remember what that stands for. He had something, something, university women. Um, and, uh, she was asking about services to, um, young women that are provided through the college and what, and, you know, could we have somebody come and do a presentation? And I was like, well, I would actually like to see that presentation myself. So I don't, cause I don't know, I was like, I know, cause we have, like, Puente and we have the Omoja and we have other, uh, other programs for, for different groups. But I didn't know if we have anything that specifically addresses, um, young women. And if we do, could we see something about that? So I would just like to maybe put that up there.
I think that's good. I, actually, I see Eileen's hand and I was absolutely, I think Eileen will have a good, a good background on this. So if you're okay, maybe she could address us right now.
Sure, or yeah, or we could have her come and do a whole presentation, whatever she, whatever, you know, go ahead, pop in.
Um, I just wanted to say, this is really, um, this is really encouraging. Um, we used to have a women's study program, uh, women and gender study program that got, um, cut. The entire program was cut. Um, I wanna say it was about 2008, around that time, and we have not been able to revive it. Um, I wanna say that it was Danielle Alexander and it was Dr. Jessica Amato who, um, actually ran that program. And, um, there, I would love to see some energy around reviving it. Um, I think it's a crucial program and so maybe, um, I would say, um, I could get support, uh, from the Academic Senate to, um, bring your, um, your colleague and friend. Um, and perhaps we can work with Dr. Parker and begin another program. It was a, it was a fledgling program and it got cut before it was even able to really get birthed. So I, I, I would support that.
Well, and as a person who holds a minor in women's studies, who would I? So, and also just to find out what we have, kind of just whole wraparound services and get, find out what we have from student services as well, you know, just seeing how we can package things, that would be great.
My suggestion is that we think about how to package this. Addressing women's studies, women's support would probably be appropriate. Backing into a program or curriculum is probably not, this is probably not the way to do that. It would be through Academic Senate, which is a separate piece, so I don't, I just don't want to get them too convoluted in a board action. Yet, but I love the idea, and we'll work out the language, I think it's a great thing.
Fantastic, all right.
So Chair Baker, Chair Baker, it stands for the American Association of Empowered Women.
That's what AAUW. I thought it was university women. Empowered?
No, it's AAW, correct? AAW?
AAUW.
It's university.
Yeah, university women.
Yeah, there is.
It was empowered women too, okay.
We could have it, maybe empowered university women. If you start our own.
There you go.
All right, thank you.
That wouldn't be a bad idea.
All right, well, fantastic. Anything else that anyone else would like to bring forward for potential agenda item? If not, we can move on. And our, this is trustee and board chair reports, so trustee Baldini, do you have a report?
No report, I think so.
All right, trustee Deluna, do you have a report?
No report.
Trustee Dodd, do you have a report?
The trifecta, no report.
Trustee Goff, I don't know what the four, four fact, I don't understand the wording. Quip effect, yeah. Nothing from trustee Goff, okay, trustee Iverson?
No report.
No report. Trustee Rios?
No report.
And student trustee Soto Gonzalez?
No report so far.
Yeah, I feel like I might have said something I was going to report, but it's gone now, so I think no report for me as well. So that would be the conclusion of our open meeting. However, we do need to go back into closed session. Before we do that, can I go ahead and do the announcement of future meetings now? Okay, so our future meetings, we do have a special meeting, a special closed session next week, a week from today, which will be our very first in-person meeting. And hopefully, this is our, hopefully this is our last Zoom, I don't know, we'll see, hopefully, fingers crossed. And then 8:12 will be our next regular meeting, and that should also be in person, so yay. And so now we are going, we are reconvening open session at 9:05 PM, and I do have one quick announcement from closed session, and that is that we approved the temporary at-will employment for Alejandro. I hear he's actually just by Alex Guerrero, which, who everyone had wonderful things to say about, as interim senior dean, counseling services, and student success. And his contract start date is July 21, 2021, with the contract end date of July 8, 2022. Step placement range 19, step E on the administrative confidential salary schedule plus longevity increment 1. I think it's Dr. Guerrero now. Thank you, thank you, I did say that, so Dr. Alex Guerrero. Welcome, well, you're already here, but welcome to the new position. So we are now moving on to 6.1, which is an action item, and consideration to enter into an employment agreement. I'm going to quickly just summarize the, what we discussed in closed session, and then we can take a motion, I guess, to Okay, where, hold on, where are they? I found it, okay, so There we go. I read the whole thing, right? Prior to considering this matter as required by government code section 45953C3, I am providing an oral summary of the recommendation regarding the salary and fringe benefits under the proposed contract. This is for a classified administrator, temporary at-will. The district is entering into a one-year employment agreement with Roger Clegg as interim vice president for information technology, beginning August 2, 2021, and ending August 1, 2022, or until position is filled on a regular basis, whichever occurs first, under the terms of his notification of appointment. The interim vice president information technology will receive a monthly salary of $15,417 and shall be entitled to receive the same medical, dental, vision, and employee assistance benefits, life insurance, and income protection as the administrative confidential employee group. However, Roger Clegg will not be provided with the administrative confidential district fringe benefits allowance to purchase other benefits. In the event interim vice president enrolls in medical benefits, the district will only pay the statutory minimum monthly contribution, and interim vice president's monthly compensation will be reduced by the same amount as the employer contribution. Is there any public comment on this one?
I have no public comment and see no hands.
All right, do I have, do we have any discussion about this? Can I get a motion to approve this employee agreement with Roger Clegg? I'll make a motion. That was, I heard trustee Goff and trustee Rios, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, so where's my, I lost my cheat sheet, hold on. All right. Is there any more discussion, further discussion about this one? No, all right, trustee Baldini, how do you vote?
trustee Baldini is not on the meeting for summer.
Oh, no, okay, that's okay. Trustee Deluna, how do you vote?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
And is student trustee Soto Gonzalez still here or no?
No. Do not see.
And I will vote yes as well, so welcome aboard Roger Clegg. Looking forward to getting reacquainted, I used to work with you once, a long, long time ago. So 6.2, consideration to enter into an employment agreement. This one is another one I get to read, it's not as long though. So, prior to considering this matter as required by government code section 54953C3, I am providing an oral summary of the recommendation regarding the salary and fringe benefits under the proposed contract. This is for classified administrator, temporary at-will. The district is entering into a five-and-a-half-month employment agreement with Douglas Roberts as interim vice president for business and finance, beginning August 15, 2021, and ending January 31, 2022, or until position is filled on a regular basis, whichever occurs first. The interim vice president, business and finance, will receive an hourly rate of $87.43 and shall receive no benefits, paid leave, or other compensation. Is there any public comment on this one?
I see no public comment.
Move for approval.
Yes.
Inez?
Okay, first from Iverson and second from Deluna. And Baldini, how do you vote?
I'm not here.
Trustee Deluna?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
And I as well will vote in the affirmative, and so we just hired two new people. All right, so that's, we're all into items? And so at this point, I believe I can just announce that we are adjourning, is that correct?
Yes.
So we are
I do see, I'm sorry, I do see Michael Baldini coming in.
It just got here. We were just leaving, so we are adjourned at 9:30, oh, sorry, 9:00.
Next week.